We would like to call this meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council, held on Tuesday, November 4th, 2022. We'd like to turn some time over to our deputy clerk, Tanya Ferguson.
Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Councilmember Mello.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson, his excuse tonight. Councilmember Samley.
Here.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Did our invoker? Okay. If we could stand for a moment of silence, and then afterwards, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Sean Savage. Okay, thank you. Turn face to flag, please. Follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on our agenda appointments, 1A Clean City Commission reappointment. The Clean City Commission has two members whose first terms will end on December 31st, 2022. Commissioner Randy Carpenter has expressed interest in being reappointed to serve a second term from January 1st, 2023, to December 31st, 2026, on the Clean City Commission. Staff recommends approval. Councilmembers, do we have our liaison?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
I'll make a motion.
Councilwalker, you make the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any disagreement? No. Okay, thank you. 1B Board of Adjustments reappointment. The Board of Adjustment has two members whose first terms will end on December 31st, 2022. Board member Wes Maroney has expressed interest in being reappointed to serve a second term from January 1st, 2023, to December 31st, 2026, on the Board of Adjustment. Staff recommends approval. Likewise, I'm not sure. I'll have to bring my list with me. I always forget that every time. Of who's?
I'll get mine.
Is it Dina on the Board of Adjustment?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwalker. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. 1C Planning and Zoning Commission reappointment. The Planning and Zoning Commission has two members whose first terms will end on December 31st, 2022. Commissioner Gary Waters Jr. has expressed interest in being reappointed to serve a second term from January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2026, on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Staff recommends approval. Yes, Councilor Staley?
I believe Mr. Waters is here. Did you want to speak to the council before we vote?
Honestly, Mayor and Commissioners, I didn't really want to speak. I didn't plan to. It's okay. Yeah, it's been an honor to be on the board, or the commission. And yeah, if you reappoint me, I'll just do my best. You know, I won't always agree with everybody on the commission, as you probably understand. But I try and see things from other people's perspective, and there's certainly been some teachable moments on the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your service. And of course, all those, once again, we appreciate your service on our commissions. Councilor Staley, would you like to make a motion?
I'd be happy to make a motion. Mr. Waters has been excellent commissioner, and he has always had very insightful and, I think, community-driven comments, and voted as such in the last year or two years. So I'd be happy to make a motion to appoint Gary Waters Jr. to the PNZ Commission.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number two on our agenda, awards and recognition. First, 1-2A Proclamation for Alzheimer's and Caregiver Awareness Month. And let me read this first, and then we have Ms. Nicole Manolito here to accept this proclamation also. Whereas the City of Kingman recognized the importance of Alzheimer's and related dementia care, and Alzheimer's and related dementia have a significant impact on the health and well-being of our residents, and more than 150,000 Arizonans live with Alzheimer's, which is the fourth-leading cause of death in the state, and more than 257,000 Arizonans provide 501 million hours in unpaid care to their loved ones living with dementia. And Arizonans are actively engaged in educating about the disease, advocating for a proper continuum of care, and improving the training and care of patients with Alzheimer's disease and related dementias. And the City of Kingman supports an Arizona without Alzheimer's, addressing this public health crisis. Now therefore, I, Ken Watkins, Mayor of the City of Kingman, do hereby proclaim the month of November, 2022, to be designated as Alzheimer's and Caregiver Awareness Month, and in doing so, encourage all our residents to learn about Alzheimer's-related dementias and patient care. This has a special place in my heart. My mother passed away from Alzheimer's, and so I encourage all of us, and my heart goes out to those taking care of those who are taking care of their loved ones. It can be a tough road, and they need the help and support of all of us, and our prayers too. So, once again, Nicole, if we could, would you like to say anything? Would you like to come up, please?
I can actually add, Nicole Manolito, thank you very much for bringing awareness to this challenge that our local communities statewide, we struggle with. As a state, we know statistically that we have the highest percentage of folks 60 and over in the nation. And so this is a very poignant month of recognition and education and advocacy to understand Alzheimer's and what we can do on a personal level to work to prevent this, to learn more about it. And I'd like to share a few, very quickly, some statistics that our Alzheimer's Association has shared with us as of March 2022. We know that Alzheimer's disease has a devastating impact, not only on those who are struggling with this challenge, but their loved ones, their caregivers as well. Typically, a job that falls on immediate family or close friends. In 2021, 11.3 million family members and friends of individuals living with Alzheimer's provided unpaid care valued at over $270 billion, 14 times the revenue of McDonald's in 2020. More than half of Alzheimer's and dementia caregivers have been providing care for a minimum of four years. On average, each dementia caregiver today spends 20% more time than even a decade ago, which is approximately six full-time extra weeks of work annually. Caregiving for an individual struggling with Alzheimer's and other dementias is often very intimate and very intrusive. Nearly 80% of older adults with dementia receive help with a daily personal activity such as bathing, dressing, grooming, or eating. In contrast, only 20% of older adults without dementia need help with these same activities. It's a significant impact for close family, for extended family. Caring for an individual with Alzheimer's disease creates or aggravates the health problems of the caregiver. Nearly 75% of Alzheimer's and dementia caregivers are somewhat or very concerned about maintaining their own health since becoming a caregiver. More than one in three dementia caregivers say their health has gotten worse due to care responsibilities. More than a quarter of dementia caregivers delay or do not do the things they should to maintain their own health, including just making it to their regular annual checkups. We also know that there are care costs associated, high care costs nationally. In 2022, $321 billion were projected to be spent on dementia care. The value of unpaid care in 2021 was $272 billion. That's an enormous amount of money that we're spending on this. Caring for an individual with Alzheimer's has a negative effect on employment, income, and financial security, not only of the individuals, but within the communities where those individuals reside. Among Alzheimer's and dementia caregivers who are employed full or part-time, 57% said, so nearly 60%, said they had to go in late, leave early, or take time off because of their caregiving responsibilities. Additionally, 18% had to go from working full-time to a lower number of hours in order to provide that care to their family member or loved one, and more than one in six Alzheimer's and dementia caregivers had to quit work entirely in order to stay home and give full-time care. It is a significant impact, and we thank you. WACOG thanks you, our community thanks you, for bringing attention to this important issue that needs to be addressed for not only us currently, but for our future in Arizona.
Great. Thank you, Nicole. If you, I'd like to invite council to come up and present this to Nicole. Second, we have a proclamation for National American Indian Heritage Month, and that is going to be presented to our area regent of Ramona Daniels of the Chapter of Daughters of the American Revolution. And I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples, whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, and their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States. And Native American Awareness Week began in 1976, and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August of 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, historical activities, have been planned. And now therefore, I, Ken Watkins, Mayor of the City of Kingman, do hereby proclaim November 2022 as the National American Indian Heritage Month, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And we'd like to invite Ms. Ramona Daniels to come up. Do you have anything you'd like to say? Okay, council, then if you would like to help me in presenting? Item number three, call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. We have a couple tonight, and we'd like to invite Mr. Larry Renfro to come up and talk to the council.
Good evening. My name is Larry Renfro. I'm here, actually. Yes, sir. Better? Sorry. It's tougher to hear me anyway.
Well, sometimes you have to speak up to it too, because it doesn't always pick us up.
Okay. My name is Larry Renfro. I'm a, I live here in the City of Kingman. I'm also a business owner here. I happen to own two residential properties, a residential rental property and also a business property. I've had a continuing, ongoing issue with code enforcement around my business. And if you'll allow, I've taken plenty of pictures, and I have some information on the properties that are involved, the owners of those properties. I've been to great lengths. I've made contact with Magnet due to the drug activity. I've made contact with KPD due to the activity. I've talked with the Sergeant of Code Enforcement for KPD. The next day, they sent somebody out to get this squatter on this property who does not own this property, to move everything off the street, and now he's building walls in front of all the trash and debris, which is directly across from my property. Property adjacent to our corner has a blind fence around it, as you'll see in the photos. The Google Earth photos that show are very old. You can, you'll see in these photos, the gathering of debris. There are now people, squatters, living on these properties with no utilities. I have to wonder where that sewage is going. I have to wonder, when I hear that generator go on, and I see that cord running across the dirt street over to another squatter's property, I have to wonder, where's the liability at? I have, I've contacted Magnet, I've contacted, tried to make contact with city manager. I have, I did got one phone call from Rusty Cooper, the Chief of Police. Shortly after that was when the code enforcement officer showed up and had to move stuff back off the street. I'm being told consistently by all these city officials, well, code enforcement doesn't really have a lot back, you know, they don't, they can't really, they can kind of find them if they will, if they want to, but they don't really have to pay the fine. I'm not getting any help, and the problem is getting worse. So I've got a property, if you're looking at my property at 2550 Pasadena, I've got a property to the right of me, which was a trust company, a thriving trust company. The owner of that property turned into a drug addict, and is now last seen months ago in Vegas buying meth and ladies of the night. Nobody has seen or heard from him since. They sent somebody to clean some of the stuff on that property, but they never finished. They moved his father out of the property across the street from me, who coincidentally moved right back into this man's house down the street at the corner of Adams and Pasadena, which also hasn't had any power for six or seven months. You can always tell when the drugs are there, because that's when all the traffic is there. And these people, these squatters on these properties, keep moving back and forth from that property to these properties. I do have some video surveillance, which I didn't have, which I don't have with me tonight. The property with the blind, the fence blinds is now bringing in at midnight, 2:00 in the morning, video footage of them bringing in, tow trucks are bringing in vehicles. I have it on good note from KPD officers that I was, had the luxury of being the instructor for in EMS at one time, who are now police officers, who have told me that those properties have been raided many times, and they found as many as 40 stolen vehicles and drugs. I've had my property, my own work truck, has been totaled by one of the vehicles in one of these pictures, and he fled the scene, and when the officer showed up, he gave him a ticket. When he did find him, he gave him a ticket for no proof of insurance and unsafe backing. My truck was totaled. That cost me $9,000. Okay, so I've done, I've talked to everybody that I can possibly talk to. This is why I'm here. If you guys will allow, I made packets, I made 10 packets of pictures and showing the owners of these properties. I'm just looking for some help for my business, because you know, if I'm providing a service to the community, I have a rental property, I'm providing housing for somebody in this community, I also have my own two properties where I live, like, I'm in the mix in this town. I was a firefighter and a paramedic in this town for 22 years. I taught at the college for 12 of that. So I've been a role model to this community for many years. I can't seem to get any help whatsoever, and I'm not looking for any special favors. But if I wanted to sell that property right now, for the price that I bought it versus what it's worth now, nobody would buy that property, because I have all this stuff around me. So if you'll allow, I'll go ahead and give you these packets.
Because if you'd like to leave those packets with Mr. Renfro, and then of course, we will direct, we'll take a look at it as a council, and then direct staff to.
I would just ask that you just take a really good look at the pictures.
Okay.
And see, you know, where I'm at, as a struggling business owner, because every one of my employees, including myself, have verbal confrontations when the police showed up. There's no report being taken. All I'm told at this point is that there's a code enforcement case open on this, but nobody is doing anything about it. So I've reached out to everybody that I can. You guys are my last hope.
Okay.
Like, I'm here, I'll do whatever I need. If you look at my property, you'll see that my property is freshly painted, my property is well taken care of, weeded on a regular basis, we don't have trash and debris all over the place. But this is a constant thing. We've owned this property, this business property, for close to two and a half years now, and it's been nothing but issues. When we thought, when they moved the father away from the property across the street from us, that that was going to be the end of it, but he promptly moved into the house that has no utilities.
Once again, appreciate your concerns, and our concerns, we will take a look at those pictures and go from there.
Okay, and so how would, how would I know that something's going to happen? Will somebody contact me, or, because at this point, I've been left out, and I have nobody that will contact me back and say, this is what we're doing, or this is how we're handling it, or what can we do to help you?
Well, we're going to, we're going to turn it over to our city manager.
So I will just say, there is an open code enforcement case on these properties, or at least on the property in reference, and I would be happy to make sure that we continue to communicate with Mr. Ren, or with Larry. I didn't catch your last name, sorry.
Mr. Renfro.
Renfro, yes. On where this case stands.
Okay. That being said, Mayor, I have reached out to that office, and I've got no response from city manager.
Well, all our emails are very available online, so if you wanted to email us, you can do that too.
I will just say that I gave this directly to Chief Cooper.
Okay.
In which he oversees code enforcement, so.
And for which, and for what?
Right, we need to, right. So we need to finish discussion, but we will, we.
I just wanted on the record that I've got one phone call from Mr. Cooper, and nothing else.
Okay.
And nothing else from any other city official.
Well, thank you for coming to city council tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Secondly, we'd like to invite Al Bigelow. We'd like to address council.
Sir, thank you. Thank you, councilmembers, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it. I'm Al Bigelow, I'm a resident of Kingman. I know this item I'm already asking about is already on the ballot, but I'd like to speak in opposition of the sales tax, the vote that's coming up. Number one, I'd like to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd apologize, we cannot discuss political items in a call to the public, because there's going to be issues regarding advocacy for or against, and would be utilizing city resources, which is prohibited under state statute. So I would apologize that we can't discuss that in a council meeting.
Okay. All right. Well, I guess I told them I'm opposed to it, so that's.
Thank you, Mr. Bigelow. Item number four, consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Councilors, I hope we've all had a chance to take a look at this. Are there any items that need to be pulled and discussed? Okay, hearing none? Can we have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. Item number five, old business. Item 5A, Kingman Airport, award RFP-IGM 22-04-01, and authorized agreement. The Public Works Department Airport Division advertised a request for qualifications, an RFQ, for the creation of an industrial park master development plan. The original project was to release approximately 1,800 acres of aeronautical use land. Based on the comments received from the FAA on the first environmental assessment submittal, the cost for the development planning greatly exceeded the project budget. The size of the release area was decreased to reduce the budget needs. The scope of work will incorporate the following task for the reduced land release area from approximately 1,800 acres to approximately 700 acres located on the western portion of the original land release area. Water and wastewater infrastructure modeling, stormwater drainage, transport planning and analysis, land use planning, roadway, rail, grading, and infrastructure engineering, and real estate marketing. Kaufman and Associates Incorporated has been selected for the award of the RFP-IGM 22-01. Pending city council approval. Staff recommends approval. Mr. Plante, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Put enough in there. I almost don't need to talk to you guys now, I guess, but I'd like to take a minute to congratulate Councilman Savage on your new position within our community, and give you a quick update on what we're doing. So this is, as it says, the, call it the next phase, phase two of the land release development. We initially anticipated, as we've talked about in the past, that this phase would occur once the land release was done, and the FAA would be involved in it, but that's not really how they saw that happening. So we're changing it up a little bit, and we've been working with Kaufman. As it indicated, we ran a request for qualifications, and for a planning and engineering firm to take care of the work that was required after the comments received from the FAA in the initial environmental assessment submittal. They were pretty significant, and again, those were items that we had planned on addressing, just not in the time that FAA is requiring those or needing those. So what you have on the screen right now is one of the preliminary conceptual maps, call it, of the land use for the industrial park. And as indicated, that was a little over 1,800 acres. It was approved to be, for us to work for land release. And for our viewing audience, and maybe some of us that don't recall, the land release is required because this property was turned over to the City of Kingman ultimately, and it has obligations from the federal government on the deed of the property that it's to be used for aviation-related purposes only. Obviously, that's a significant amount of land, and so, you know, we feel that it can be released and used for other economic development and industrial-type uses. I do want to note, we want to reserve some portion of, and that was part of the comments that we received from the FAA for aviation-related, one, you know, growth and expansion of the airport, as well as that's also a revenue generator. Kingman Airport is a enterprise fund, so the funds that are generated from land sales and leases extend into the long-term operation of the airport. So a couple little things I want to highlight, and I'll switch to the next slide, which is what we're looking to release. On the north side of the property, on the north side of the runway 1735, you can see that we had two parcels that equaled about 50 acres. Those were removed early on, because those are really close proximity to the field, to the runway, and those were better suited for aviation-related uses. And then when you go to the south side, you can see the drain channels and all that. Keep in mind, this is some conceptual work, because part of the upcoming project will include engineering for drainage and hydrology, and, you know, this may not look exactly like what it's going to look like in this picture, or what it does look like in this picture. So this is what we're proposing right now, and this is what the packet that you guys have included in your council packet for the proposal for the land release planning and development. The blue section is what we're proposing to leave. The blue section is what we're proposing to leave as aviation-related. We ended up in this configuration. We're trying to utilize as best we could Rancho Santa Fe Parkway. You know, that, that provides access into the park. And the challenge we have in that is the, the airport-related property has to be continuous. We can't have an island of airport-related or aviation encumbered property separate from other properties. So that's how we ended up at this point. This is about seven hundred acres, plus or minus, of area that we will develop. One thing I do wanna highlight is we are looking in this plan, if you look at the scope of services, which I know that was some light reading at twenty-two or twenty-seven pages, whatever it was, that includes areas that include the entire land release area, which is not the land release area, but the entire airport-owned properties. And then there are portions that are for the land release area specific. The reason for that is although we can't use the blue area for non-aviation-related business, so it could be flight schools, it could be logistics companies, you know, related to air, air use, we can use that property for those aviation-related items. And so we still need to plan for those, be it transportation, be it utilities and, I mean, utilities as water, sewer, gas, telco, you know, any utility we need into that future. Transportation, again, we're still gonna be looking at the roads and the infrastructure needed to convey, you know, vehicles and goods and things in and out of that land release area. So we're gonna be master planning the entire area, but we're going to be getting specific information we need from the yellow section to satisfy the FAA's comments for the, the environmental assessment. And so with that, the environmental assessment, we addressed everything we can address there. The last item we have pending, which is due back to us any minute, was a, a four oh four jurisdictional request we put in with the Army Corps of Engineers. Not to get into that, but that, that should relieve some problems for us in this, this next phase of planning. And so again, the packet you have on your, on your desk for consideration currently is for us to do the land release portion for that seven hundred acres, plus or minus highlighted in yellow, and master planning for the entire area for both aviation and non-aviation-related business. And with that, I'll try and answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Plante. So just the yellow area alone is the seven hundred acres?
Yeah, it's actually a little over. It's a plus or minus seven hundred and fifty something acres.
And how much is in the blue, just out of curiosity?
Uh, it's actually a little over a thousand.
Okay, so this is close to the total eighteen hundred, adding, well, they're still shy a little bit. But you, because you said you, the stuff around the field, you decided not, we're gonna keep for more for, like, for long-term storage for aviation?
Yeah, so the, the blue area, that thousand and fifty-three acres that's shown there, that is the area that would be reserved currently for aviation-related.
Right, okay, okay. Great. Counsel, counsel, any other questions for Mr. Plante? Yes, Counsel Saly.
The thousand acres that's reserved for aviation, once that goes into a master plan down the road, if we want to divide that up again and maybe have, just for example, like the south end, turn that into industrial as well because it's a little bit further from the airport, it, it may not, it, it may not attract aviation businesses because it's, it's too far away. Will we be able to do that or once the master plan is done, are you locked in and that's it?
No, you are not. Now, what you will have to do, which is the environmental assessment portion, NEPA through FAA requires that we have to do the same process again. So, but one thing to keep in mind with that property to the east of the field, if you look at the airport master plan, there's already some provisions in the master plan for the air, airside, the airfield itself, related to those properties. And so there was some portion of that already reserved for aviation-related purposes. Obviously, it's much larger, but that's two-part. The, the FAA understands also that this property means long-term revenue sources for the, the airport, for the airport operation itself. And so that was one of the comments that they had brought up. The second part of that is cost. They did not tell us no, they said, we'll work with you to, to, you know, make this happen. We obviously had to show financial responsibility and that we could operate the airport long-term without going into general funds or jeopardizing grant funds. But the, the engineering component of this, to address the comments from the FAA, we're looking at like a thirty percent level design to address, they wanna know how much material we're actually gonna move in the grading for this project.
For everything.
For everything, yeah. And so that's a significant amount and that's why we ended up reducing the land release area. That was to try and satisfy both of those. One, the initial cost estimates we got back were, were much larger than we could afford through that fund.
Yeah, I understand that. I just didn't wanna get pigeonholed into a lifetime of having to keep that for aviation if, if there isn't a demand for it and we see it. For example, over the next couple of years, there could be a huge demand for more industrial and if we needed, if we sold all those seven hundred and wanted to open up some more, I just wanna make sure we would have the ability to do that.
We do. We, we, again, we would do the same process we're doing now. We'd do another environmental assessment and go through the NEPA process. And the good thing is, you know, with some of this master planning, we're gonna have a lot of those steps in place. We'd be able to dust them off and, you know, depending on what the, the requirements are from FAA at that time, hopefully it would be a little easier.
We'd have the money too, from selling some of that seven hundred acres, right, to start the process again.
That, that is correct and our, just based on the length of time that this has taken, which has been pretty frustrating for all of us, is that we, we probably, once we get the land release done on the seven hundred acres, we'll get to work on what additional we can release that goes hand in hand with the yellow section that you already see. There is some pressure, as Jack indicated, from the FAA to show them that we are carving out some property for aviation businesses and activity. And we, we got that message
Right.
loud and clear. But as you pointed out, there's a large amount of acreage that's, that just won't lend itself easily to aviation activity or businesses that certainly fit in with the yellow section, so.
Okay, that's good.
And that is part of what we're doing is, as well as the land use planning, you know, looking at market strategy and financial forecasting for the, for the whole project.
Right, right. It's too bad we had to cut it up into pieces instead of just doing it all at once. But I understand and, and I'm satisfied with, with the direction that, and that we have options down the road. Thanks, Jack.
Well, and also, Jack, thank you, Counsel Saly. As a reminder too to everybody, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jack, that this is the first time the FAA has had to deal with something so large on this kind of scale. They're used to dealing with one to five to ten acre kind of projects where this is, and so it made more sense to divide the eighteen hundred acres into, and make it divisible so we can deal with it and make it easier for them to deal with too, I would think, right?
Yeah, the, the comments received were based on a project, the largest that they could show us an example of was eighty acres, something like that. And so when you're talking about master planning and, and doing grading plans for eighty acres versus eighteen hundred, then we're, we're asking them to release more acres than some airports actually have in total. So it is a significant amount. It was the largest one that was ever requested. The one we're doing is still the largest one ever requested, so.
I would think so.
We're, we're the guinea pigs in this one and, and we feel it.
I bet. Counselor, councils, any other questions? Okay. I guess we need, well, staff recommends approval on this, so we need a motion for item five A under old business.
I'll make that.
Oh, go ahead.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you. Have a good night.
New business, item six, we have none. Number seven, department reports. Item seven A, stormwater update. Mr., yes, Mr. Foggan.
Thank you, Mayor. In one of the most monumental monsoon seasons that we've ever seen, we felt like it would be beneficial for the council and for the community to get a department report on stormwater in the high desert and what it looks like and what the city does with stormwater and how we kind of handle it and maybe some future plans on what that will look like or at least a preview of what that can look like. So Phil, I've asked Phil to take over.
Mr. Allred, welcome.
Good evening. So as, as Mr. Foggan mentioned, just wanna talk a little bit about stormwater and the, the presentation tonight, we're, we're gonna look at four different things. You know, how we design in the arid southwest. Talk a little bit about our stormwater master plan, how we manage stormwater within the city and some of our upcoming efforts for hopefully some improvement in the future. So to, to start off with, it's, it's always good to point out that we do live in the arid southwest. We, we get relatively eight to ten inches annually. The, one of the big differences is sometimes we can get three to four of those inches in a very short period of time during the monsoon season. And so we, we always wanna make sure that we're, we're planning for, for drainage as much, as much as we can in the most reasonable way. So and typically, you'll see, one of the big differences between Kingman and, and you know, the, the arid states is we don't have a whole lot of storm drain system. Kingman does have some. It's, you know, a little bit on Stockton Hill and, and in the airway vicinity. But other than that, most of the drainage that, that we receive is conveyed in roadways. We also have a few channels, whether they be engineered or, or, or natural, but primarily the stormwater is conveyed on the surface. As we do drainage design, we, we design our system to convey nuisance runoff for the more frequent minor storms. And in, in the engineering slang, that's about a, a ten-year storm. And so, you know, these, these ten-year storms is, is all about statistics and how frequent we, we may or may not get them. So a ten-year storm represents about a ten percent chance every year for us to receive a certain amount of rain. And it's the same that, you know, we, we have something called the hundred-year storm. That's the one, one percent chance every year that, that, that we get it. And it's also, in, in, one of the misnomers is we call it the ten-year storm, the hundred-year storm. We could get to hundred-year storms, you know, back to back, you know, year to year. It's, it's, you know, they, they do this statistical analysis and within that period of time, there's a, there's a certain chance for, for storms to occur. So typically for, for these minor storms, we try to keep all of the storm flow within the roadway, which is typically from curb to curb. And then for the larger storms, we try to keep that contained within the right-of-way. So I have a little graphic here that, that, that kinda shows that. So for a ten-year storm, we, we try to keep it contained within the curb. And then for the hundred-year storm, it's within the right-of-way. So what, one of the, the things that we often deal with is people don't understand that water can over top the curb and go out beyond the sidewalk. It's designed to do that in, in the larger storms. So I think it's, it, it's, it's a good graphic to show how, how we're designing. It's also important to note that, you know, Kingman's been around a long time and so in the older parts of towns, it wasn't designed this way. And the, the newer subdivisions and, and development are being designed this way. So this is just kind of our, our general approach, but for the older parts of town, it's important to note that we may not always achieve what I'm showing here on this graphic. So the next item, I'll just talk a little bit about the design process for, for development. Developers hire what we call registered professional engineers. And it's important to note that when a registered professional engineer signs or seals a document, so they, they put together plans and, and they do the design. And when, when they seal those documents, it's, it's a legal representation that the, the documents were prepared by them or under their, their supervision and that, and they're certifying that the work meets a certain professional standard and a certain level of care. And there's legal ramifications for engineers who do not do this. If, if, if they are, if they're not careful, there's, there are certain legal ramifications for those engineers. So those, the, the developers hire professional engineers to design their development. Drainage is planned to maintain existing drainage patterns. What that means is that we, we try to make sure that the, the water is leaving the site in a similar manner than, than it currently is. We don't wanna concentrate flows so that they, they cause damage or increase flows so that they cause damage to someone downstream. Engineers, well, these engineers hired by, by the developers, they prepare the plans for review by the city. The city does not design private development. That's, that's the responsibility of the, the private engineering community. The city reviews plans for compliance with applicable rules and we rely on data that these professional engineers provide us. And for any city-funded projects, we follow the same rules. We, we make sure that the existing drainage patterns are, are, are maintained and not changed. A little bit about our stormwater master plan. We just went through an, an update in 2020. As part of that process, we evaluated and identified different flood hazards and, and problems. There was a public component to this where we received comments from the, the, the public. For some of the higher-ranked projects or areas that, that were identified, our consultant prepared some, some high-level conceptual solutions to, to those. And, and, and behind all of this stormwater master plan was the, the consultant performed a, a stormwater model for, for the entire city to help us see where a lot of this drainage is, is going. So the stormwater management, the stormwater master plan helps guide us when, when we're working with the development community to identify known issues. It also helps us identify potential solutions that may require capital funds. And it's, this master plan is available to everybody. It's on our website. Anybody can, can look at it and, and see what it, what we've come up with so far. In terms of stormwater management, the city maintains a network of, of roadways, city-owned basins and conveyance channels. And we work to maintain those in, in a manner that they don't impede flow. So in, in our channels, we're looking at weed abatement. We're clearing culverts ahead of storms, culverts and catch basins. We, we perform shoulder repair on, on our roadways. And after larger storms, we are usually out cleaning up. It's also important to note that the city generally does not do work on private property. We, we will maintain publicly-owned city property. And it's also important to note that there, the city has little enforcement tools for drainage disputes between two property owners. That's typically a civil matter. You know, there's, there's probably some things that can be done during construction on the permitting level, but after that, if there's a, if there's a dispute between two property owners, that's, that's something that they have to work out or go to court, one of the two. So some upcoming efforts, it's, we're, we're looking to update our, our drainage ordinance. And as part of that update, we're, we're gonna make some modifications to our design manual to include some updated technologies and methodologies for estimating storms and, and managing stormwater. We're, we're looking to make some adjustments to development requirements. Some of that could involve dry wells. It could also involve some changes to stormwater basins and, and like I said, methodology. And the hope is that as we make this update, it'll, it'll provide better uniformity and drainage practice. drainage practices across the region. So, a lot of this, we're, we're going to be working with the county to make sure that we're kind of in concert with their, their requirements and try to, try to be uniform as, as, as much as we can. Second item I have on there is, we're going to try to increase public awareness. We've, we've talked on the staff level about doing some information campaigns ahead of monsoon season. We also would like to do a little bit more about notifying people regarding flood insurance. One of the things that's going around is people are saying that their insurance brokers are telling them they can't get flood insurance if they don't live in a, in a flood plain. That's incorrect. Anybody can get flood insurance from the NFIP, the National Flood Insurance Program. The city Kingman participates in that national program, and so through that program, anybody within our community qualifies for, for flood insurance. And one thing that we'll also do is strategically place sandbags in, in different locations throughout the city and let everyone know where they're at so that they can try to prepare as much as they can ahead of storms. With that, I think that's all I have, if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Allred. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Allred?
I have a comment.
Yes, Counselor Smith.
Hello. You're right, we can get flood insurance, however, living in the desert, a lot of us, most of us probably don't, which I know a lot of this last monsoon, some friends of mine found out they didn't have it, and something we all should probably look at our own policies.
Most home policies do not carry flood insurance. You, you generally have to buy a separate policy for, for flood insurance.
And it might be a good idea if we get another monsoon like we just had, huh?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for bringing that to our attention. Other questions? Okay, thank you, Phil.
Yep.
Item 7B, city code, boards and commissions. Is this, Mr. Cooper, is this yours?
That would be me.
Okay.
I, I think it was the last council meeting, we had some questions regarding the appointment process and the terms of the boards and commissions. Just kind of a brief refresher, we recently updated that entire section in the city code to try and clean up a lot of that language. And I think there was, the first question was regarding just that application process and the approval process, and I know the city, excuse me, the city manager had sent out some communication, I think, to try and address that, to make sure that you folks got the applications, so you could see all the applications, because I, I think that was the predominant question that was regarding that portion at the last meeting. The, the second issue that was, was discussed or requested talked about was term limits. During the process where we updated the code, we had discussed if we want to do term limits or not. The council provided direction to do term limits, I think the discussion was eight years, seems to be enough time for someone to be on a board or a commission. I think some of the issues that, that had occurred in the past was some folks kind of became a little possessive of the particular board or commission that they were on. But again, that's a council discussion issue, so we ended up settling on those two four-year terms. If council, I guess that's the brief, I guess it's up to council if you want to discuss this issue, if there's some direction that you'd like to provide me.
Okay, is that it?
That's it unless there's questions.
Of course. Questions for Mr. Cooper?
Mayor.
Yes, Counselor.
Mr. Cooper, I know Manager Foggan and I had a conversation about absences and excused absences, so while you're in the midst of looking at this, I just, I was, I was hopeful that would be in here, but I don't see it.
I, I didn't add that section, I became recently aware that that discussion occurred.
Okay.
And right now, what we do is, we have a process where if a, if a council person fails to attend three or more council, or council person, commission person, I apologize, three or more commissions or board meetings with, that are unexcused, meaning they do not call, they're deemed to have abandoned their position and the position is vacated. That's up to council if you want to address that. There's also the, the issue that council can remove someone at any point in time if you feel they're not coming to enough meetings, providing the input they need to provide. That's completely within council discretion, it just means the council needs to notify staff that that's the position that you would like that to be discussed at a, a meeting. Yeah.
I guess I'd just like to be a little more specific, you know, you can call in and be excused.
Right.
Can you be excused how many times?
Well, we have it, it's three times calling in 24 hours in advance. And the issue is.
What level of excuse?
What's a good excuse? And then we become, then the staff becomes the schoolteacher trying to, you know, what kind of note are you going to submit that says, is this a good excuse or not? So, when, when I drafted this, I just felt if you, if you provide notice, that's what I felt was sufficient when I drafted this. If there's some language, or if the council wants me to try and address that in some other manner, I can try. But again, it becomes a point, am I going to list what's a good excuse and what's not a good excuse?
And I, I understand that, I, I guess I don't want to be the absentee police, but I would like to see, like, some of these commissions don't meet very often.
I.
So, you know, you have a commission that meets every other month, and they get three excused absences.
Majority of the year.
That's an issue.
Yeah.
So, I don't know how council feels about reducing that amount, I mean, I, I would hate to go to every commission and say, okay, this commission's too, I mean, it's, it's pretty general across the board, right, for all commissions?
Correct.
So, I, I guess I would just like that to have some consideration as far as, as excused absences.
And what we could do on staff side is if the staff starts to notice that there's maybe a concern, we can forward that information to you folks even without addressing any changes as well. I'm not saying you don't, we don't have to do a change, but there's some things we could do internally to maybe push that issue forward administratively so you're aware of it. Meaning, we don't, it's maybe not a good excuse, or this person in the past has called last minute and, and never offered anything that was a decent enough reason, we could communicate, excuse me, communicate to the mayor that there may be a concern or issue that we might need to bring to the entire council.
Okay.
And don't get me wrong, I mean, I appreciate the willingness to serve, but if you're going to serve, it's a commitment, and if you're going to fulfill that commitment, you need to attend the meetings. So, you know, I'm grateful, but yet participate.
Yeah, and like I say, and the manager was going to say, sometimes it's easier to address these things administratively as opposed to trying to change tax, because it's sometimes, this is what happened last time with this code, is we would, oh, this was a problem this month, we address it, then two months later, we address something else and we start becoming, it becomes very convoluted, which is why I spent a lot of time trying to address this, and maybe this isn't the perfect solution, but there may be options that we can deal with, and like I said, I know the manager had a comment.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Samley. Manager Foggan?
Yeah, so, we can be certainly more aware of this. We don't have it happen very often, but no sooner did we change this and adopt this new ordinance, and we had a commission member call it straight, three times straight, meeting it quarterly, so they've already missed three quarters of the year because of work conflicts and, or whatever, they, they called, and so they didn't fall victim to just missing three meetings. We certainly can bring those names forward for consideration, for the council's consideration to see if they want to replace that person. Because like was pointed out, you, you miss three meetings, you're really out of the loop, even if you were excused. I, I have to agree, I, I don't think we can massage the ordinance to cover everything, being general and just being more aware and knowing that we need to bring one of these items forward for the council's consideration. Not that you're mean or not that we're being mean, but these folks have work to do, and when you're missing a voice, that's, that puts the commission behind or makes them less effective. So, I, I hear what you're saying, and I think we can, I think we can actually do that administratively. It doesn't, like I said, it doesn't happen very often, it just happened, no sooner did we adopt this, and we had a commission member who's called out three straight times, so.
Well, that's what came to mind, right, as we were discussing this, is our track record. And of course, Counselor Samley, did you have another? Okay. But I was thinking, well, what's our track record so far? So far, it's been pretty good, but of course, like you said, we passed this and what happens?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's, and we're certainly paying attention to those people, the commission members that have been appointed and are just not showing up, we, we will absolutely move forward with replacing folks that are not, do not want to be engaged or part of the commission.
Okay, well, thank you. And counsel, yes, Counselor Savage.
I just want to clarify.
There you go. Yeah, don't hold it down.
I said it once, hey, I'm a rookie. It says the terms are four years, unless they're pointing in the midst of someone else. But what's not clear is it says that they may not miss three meetings in a term, it doesn't say anything about consecutive.
Correct.
So, that's three meetings in four years.
In that four years.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, any other discussion? Yes, Counselor Samley.
So, one of my concerns was that we were no longer seeing all the applications, and then the, the process of how those move forward to the council. I was worried about because the, the commissioners, they serve at, they serve the council, not the staff or the city, they're, they're there to advise us, and it, and so if we put forward an application, you know, we, we go out and talk to somebody and have them put in an application for a spot, and then we don't, they don't, their application doesn't even come up for consideration, that won't feel very good to any of us, that we never even got to see that or know that they got shut down, and you'll get a call later, like, why'd you ask me to put in an application and it wasn't even considered, right? So, I'm looking here, and it doesn't really say specifically that these are scored and we won't see them, and, you know, it only goes to the mayor and then comes forward. So, that's not what I'm reading in section three here, so does, I assume you haven't already changed that.
We haven't changed, this is the language as it is.
Okay.
And this is what council adopted, whatever, two months ago. That, like I say, the administrative side is what the city manager was indicating when he sent that communication out to council, how we can address that to make sure you guys are fully informed.
So, I'm, I guess what I'm asking is, why isn't that spelled out in this section specifically that they're scored, that the liaison, the mayor, and which staff members would score them, and then how those will move forward?
Well, because the more you spell it out, the, the, the more difficult that it sometimes becomes than if you're not following the process exactly. So, the idea is you set out a rough outline of how these things are going to work, and then you have, this is how it's going to be perceived or how it's going to operate within the administrative side. And, and like I say, this gives you some of that flexibility to modify however you want to work it, and it's basically the council directing staff how they want this to proceed.
So, in my experience, we, as a council, don't really annually sit down and say, how do you want to do this? We don't have those opportunities. So, I think that this section should be cleared up tonight according to everyone's opinion on how we want to see the applications come forward for the commissions. And I, and I think that this should be a little bit more specific with what everybody's comfortable with, and whether we want them, if we want to see all the applications, if we want to vote on all the applications, if we want them scored, you know, that, that sort of thing. That, that's my opinion, I, I'd like to hear how everybody else feels about it. Maybe I'm the only one that's worried about it.
No. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor.
So, under B in three.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, just maybe adding some language in there that, that, you know, you don't have to get so specific, but just how, how the process goes, and, you know, I, I'm of the opinion, I, I want to, I want to see all of them. You know, I, I take to heart your comment that they serve at the will of the council, so I, I appreciate staff looking them over, and I appreciate, but I feel like in some of the commissions, the staff really does run the, the commission anyway, and so I'd like to make sure that we have the right people in place, so. I, I'm of that same opinion, and I think that's a good place to put it in that area.
Any other comments from council?
I think I agree with that, I think, you know, if I'm asking somebody to just put an application in.
Mm-hmm.
I think, you know, if I never saw it, I'd kind of wonder what's going on, and I, I think the council does need to see them.
Carl, in the past, I know we would see, of course, and we changed it here a little bit, we sort of tried to simplify it, but it sounds like we.
Went too far.
Correct, we might have gone a little bit too far. Before, the applications were all sent to us, but then staff would recommend who they felt was the best person. And now, correct me if I'm wrong, had the, our manager Foggan clarify?
We were not making recommendations on individual.
Okay, staff wasn't at all.
We.
Unless, unless it was the second, then I'd see them say.
Well, the.
Ask the question.
Yeah, we, we've always, you know, for the most part, would recommend anybody that serves. So, I, I don't know, you know, I sent out the email with the process, and if you want to, you know, if that process doesn't work for you, it's more work frankly for me and for my team, so we're happy to go back to the way you were doing it before. It, it's, you know, again, as Carl said, it's completely up to you. We, so, I mean.
I guess I would make one comment on, on, one of the reasons why we were at least trying to have this initial review started with the manager, the designee, is there were times that things were getting through that, when I say things were getting through that shouldn't have been gotten through, meaning the applications weren't, I don't want to say necessarily complete, but sometimes didn't even meet requirements, being residents too far outside of the city limits or having any of those particular skills or whatnot that specifically need, needed to be there. And I know we ran into a couple of times where we either appointed people that shouldn't have been appointed because they didn't qualify because of certain residency requirements, or I think we felt that maybe they just hadn't been vetted well enough. But I think the idea was for staff to at least make sure this initial application was complete, and then Ron's point of just trying to make sure, okay, now that we've made that screening for the everything to you guys, and like I say, if you want, if you want me to change this, that's fine, we can change it, or if you're fine with just Ron sending it, we can do that.
Well, and I think it is important of talking about all this, that we have diversity on the commissions representing different occupations.
Right.
Not just loading a commission up with just all from one background.
And, and we ran into some of those problems.
And that's where we've had those problems in the past, so I think that's important too, to consider for all of us, so.
Well, I think, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I, I think that if, if you had those concerns, I mean, you're getting the applications first, or the clerk is, and if you have those concerns, I, I would think that you could pass them along. I think what the council, what I'm hearing everybody say is they, we just want more hands-on in the process, because, you know, that, that's our job, we, we can do the due diligence, we can, you know, if you, if there's concerns and there's an applicant that doesn't flat-out qualify, then at least we know that, or the application wasn't complete, you know, we, we could know that.
Manager Foggan?
So, I'll, I'll give you an example, I mean, the process that I laid out and sent out in an email seemed to be answering these questions, so, and we're happy, more than happy to provide all the applications that were considered for whatever the commission position is. The way it stands right now, we've got applications where people said they specifically want to serve on a commission, and there's three openings and two people for the spots, so it's, there's no scoring really other than making sure that they qualify for the, you know, all the, the requirements to be on a commission or that, this specific commission. You know, the, the one that went through the process that was approved, I'll just use Mr. Valentine's example, as an example, there were, I think, four applications submitted, and I'm sure that all four of the people that applied for. that applied for that commission would have been fine. Mr. Valentine had been a business owner for 20 years and had kind of that experience of what we were looking for, for that particular commission. I thought, in talking to Councilperson Staley after the meeting, that if we had all the applications, it went through the scoring process, the mayor was involved, the council liaison was involved and all the applications were provided, that council could study those and if they didn't agree, then they had the, always have the option to say, I like candidate B or C rather than D and, and go that direction. So, when I had this conversation after the last council meeting with Councilperson Staley, that's where I said, look, we, we, we kind of dropped the ball on, we should have included the, all the applications so the council could see them. No, no, no problem there. We can certainly add the staff lia, or the council liaison to the scoring process. So, there's another voice there. So, I, other than going back to the way we were doing it, that seemed to be a good way to bring these applications forward where they, we do have the opportunity to look at the makeup of the commission. We, they are your commissions, but we spend a whole bunch of time with your commissions and they're working on master plans that, that we eventually have to put into reality. And so, having good commission, good commissioners on good commissions is really important. So I, I get where the council's coming from. Again, what I had proposed was, I, what I felt was kind of that happy medium where we weren't just dumping a bunch of applications that hadn't been vetted on the council, which is really how it was happening and has been happening for the last three-plus years. So, I mean, we're, we're happy to go to that or a modified, like I said, we certainly don't want to take any authority away from the council, that's not the point of this at all. And willing to, willing to go in whatever direction you want to go. But, I mean, the process does add, you know, meetings and effort, which I think is worth, frankly, I think it's worth the time, so.
Thank you, Manager Foggan.
Yep.
So, council, after discussion, I know Councilperson Stanley and Walker both have suggested a couple of things. Actually, sort of going back to the way it was, it sounds like, do we want to keep that process or do we want a happy medium where the liaison, the council liaison assigned to that commission, with myself and with Manager Foggan can review it? You'll receive all applications, but we'll put that one forward. Is that the way I understood it, Manager Foggan? And then we would put that, the la, the council liaison, myself and Manager Foggan would suggest that name?
With, with all the applications?
With all the applications, but we would suggest the one we like, that we, we favor for that council, for that commission. Or do we want to go back to the way it was? Thoughts? Yes, Councilperson Melo, sorry.
So, I, I think that's fair. I like that. I mean, I'm on my way out, but I like that because you still all have your vote, right? Amongst those, all those applications? You're just making an educated suggestion, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I like that. I, I would be in favor of that.
Okay. Councilperson Staley?
Well, first I want to go back to the fact that some applications got through that, that were not complete or they were not qualified. I want to make sure that no matter where we go, that the clerk is checking those and they're not moving forward if they're incomplete.
That has been corrected.
Okay, because I, all these years had assumed that, that those had been given the once-over before we voted on them. You know, I, I don't, I guess my, what I want to know is what's the scoring based on? Who, you know, how do you score them? Is it, is it a standard form for every commission?
Yep.
It is.
Yep. So, the scoring looks at your expertise in the area in which you're wanting to be a commissioner. It looks at your level of service, your show, have you shown that you're, you've been willing to volunteer in, in, you know, in other ways? Doesn't have to be on commissions, but you know, what's your, what's your track record? And, and, you know, what's, clearly a big part of that is background. You know, have you lived in the community six months? Have you lived in the community 26 years? So, it's, it's looking at those, those things that, you know, if you've seen the application, it's just really asking the reviewer to have looked at the application and scored basically what the answers are on those, on the applications. No surprises, there's not specific ones. We're not, you know, we're not looking for each commission to have a different score sheet. There's just some...
I guess I'm just wondering if there's room for bias in that scoring or if it's very black and white.
I think, well, I mean, there's always bias in everybody's decisions, so I don't, I'm not going to say there's not bias, but I will say with a number of voices coming together and talking about, you know, why did, you know, here's your score, I had that person scored the lowest, how come you have that person scored the highest? And that gives you an opportunity to, maybe you missed something in the application, maybe that person had, and that's where you get into the, you know, the, the idea that maybe you just don't know what you don't know, right? And someone goes, well, I, I happen to know that this person did scouting for 50 years or whatever and didn't, didn't remember to put that down. I can't say that that's happened, but...
Right.
I mean, those are, those are the things that we're looking at is, you know, do you have a background in what you want to do? And we get plenty of applications where it's, a person for planning commission is a great example. We don't want a planning commission full of planners and engineers, right?
No, goodness.
You know, I mean, there's room for that, but we, we certainly want to have the community represented and the process gives us that opportunity to say, oh yeah, John is a planner or has a planning background, Mary is in real estate and, you know, and it gives, it really gives you that opportunity to, to compare the applications with the current makeup of your commission and have a dialogue, which is, I would say, is really hard to do in a council setting like this. And so, by the time it gets to this, to this level, yeah, there, certainly, if you get all the applications and George was not considered and you're the one that went and spoke to George, I, I guess you get an opportunity to put their, that name forward or to go back to George and say, hey, there, you know, there were other folks that had different qualifications that we, we wanted to move forward. I, I wish this was a, a real big problem where we had many, many applications that we were considering. Like I said, I've got three openings on a commission right now and two people who said they want to serve on it. I mean, that, that will be to you next, next council meeting and there won't be any scoring. They, you know, they, as long as they qualify, they're going to be, they're going to come to you, so.
Okay, so given what the scoring looks like, and I know we kind of talked about a compromise, letting the liaison have some input, but I think, just looking at how I've looked at the applications over the last six years, those are things I already was looking at when I was making my decision of who would be the best commissioner. And I can only speak for myself, but I looked at, you know, what's their background, how long in the community, you know, have, have they served, do they seem like a good? So I don't know if this is, the scoring is necessary. And, and for me, this just goes back to, I want to make sure that I see everybody I know who applied, you know, who was the best one that got in and who was denied. So, I will turn that over to the rest of you guys, but that's, that's kind of where I'm at.
Okay. And actually, from, with that comment too, and Councilperson Walker and Stanley, it sounds like we really sort of want to go backwards a little bit. I mean, sort of have, make sure the council is more aware of those. I don't know, that's sort of the take I'm, I'm feeling. Is that, is that the rest of you have that sentiment?
I'd like to see all the applicants.
Well...
You know, and I think as long as the liaison maybe is involved in the discussion of scoring them.
Well, that's what we've talked about.
And then we do all see it anyhow at the end, because right now, we're not getting anything.
Well, and you will, and you will see it. That's what Manager Foggan, I've talked about it. We're going to, we're going to make sure that you see all the applications.
Okay.
But, go ahead, Ron.
No, I, I, I just, you know, I, I've watched it happen too and I don't doubt that council members are studying and looking at the applications, but from the chief seats, what I've seen is that if you were able to show up to the council meeting, then, and another person was unable to make it, there's a better chance of you being put on the commission than the people that weren't. And so, this, this takes that away. Now, that brings up the, you know, were they not committed enough to come and speak? Or did they just, were they unable to, to be at this particular meeting? So, I mean, I just, I, I don't doubt it, but I, I really do think that a process like this, and certainly it would come with a recommendation, but there's nothing that requires the council to follow the recommendation. I, I don't, I don't think, I certainly won't be offended. I, you know, if, if someone feels that another applicant is better suited for that commission, ultimately, it's your commission, right? So, but we certainly will change applications being put in the packet. That, that will be changed. It was changed as of last meeting, so.
Okay. Councilperson Savage?
Just sitting back, having fun back here, just absorbing. Is there an interview process?
No.
Nope. So this is all based solely on an application?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, you...
Yes, Councilor, go ahead.
You could contact them once you get your packet if you wanted to sit down and talk to them one-on-one. I know, I've seen that happen before. One other thing, since I think everybody's good on that one, is I just would like to see sort of a heads-up, we have openings in the following commissions.
We are posting that monthly as required.
Perfect, okay. And that's posted on the website?
Yes. And we, and we keep an active list.
And can we also post that on our city Facebook page every month? What, what openings are?
Yeah, I, I honestly don't know if it's not happening there as well.
It is not happening.
Okay.
It's happened once since we've started our Facebook, that I know of, that I went back and looked.
Okay.
Yeah, once, one time, a couple of times? Okay.
Well, we only...
I'd like it to be monthly.
It's, it is, well, as far as I know, it is monthly and this just went into effect.
Okay.
So...
Because that helps and we can share those and hopefully get more applications.
So, I think, Carl, I think then what we want to see is of course, and it's already been, I think that, that's been rectified because of discussion from last meeting, that all, all council will receive a copy of that application. And then, of course, we are adding the fact that the liaison to that commission will also be included on the decision on who we push forward, who we recommend to the council. Does that sound right?
Correct. And I just got notification that we are posting the openings on both Facebook and the website.
Great, great. And of course, it would be great if we had lots of applications to review. As Manager Foggan mentioned, we have three openings and I think we had, well, were there two or three applications? I thought there were three and...
We have three openings on transit with two...
Oh, that's right.
Current applications. And we are going to be reaching out to applicants that have not necessarily picked their, their two favorite commissions to see if they'd be willing to serve on other commissions. Because we're certainly short on...
Applications and people.
We've got applications coming in for the, I'll call them the popular commissions, but the not-so-popular, we're, we're a little bit low on.
Right, so we have multiple openings and we don't have very many applications. That's really what it boils down to. So, Mr. Cooper?
And I'm going to continue to beat this to death. This is just done with, administratively with the manager. This is not going to require any code changings at this time.
Okay. Okay. And of course, once again, council, if this needs to be brought up, you know, please, that's, you know, that's what we're here, here to do. So, thanks again, Mr. Foggan, Mr. Cooper. Item 7C, water presentation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Manager Foggan.
So, we put this on the department report section this week because we wanted to make sure that it was clear. We have an INA meeting that is coming up. It will be on November 12th. And so, I've asked Rob to put together a presentation to just walk everybody through the INA, why, why we're so interested in this and why we need community, the community to, to be paying attention and if at all possible, attending and/or sending in comments to ADWR on the importance of the INA. So, Rob?
Thank you. Mayor, council members, again, this is water presentation, talk about some of the resource planning that's going on. And just a reminder that the Department of Water Resources has scheduled a public hearing. The director will present his data in support or in opposition to the proposed INA and receive public comment. Within 30 days of the hearing, the director will issue his written findings. And where and when? It's at the Mojave County Admin Building, 700 West Beale, on Saturday, November 12th from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. So just to go over a little bit of the background of some of the things we've talked about before. In irrigation, non-expansion area, if, if designated by the Department of Water Resources, would stop the farming of additional acreage of agriculture. Those in operation now would be allowed to continue and there would be a procedure where operations that couldn't make the claim, that had, they had expanded substantial sums of money with the idea of, you know, operating it on a large-scale agricultural use, could go through a process with the Department of Water Resources and be granted permission to continue that. This would not apply to residential gardens, would not impact livestock grazing or ranching or again, those users that have been in the basin historically. It does not impact exempt wells. Exempt wells are those that produce under 35 gallons per minute and for non-agricultural use. It does require large wells to be metered and measured. It does require annual reporting of water pumped to the Department of Water Resources and it does protect the basin from additional acres being irrigated. So, the amount of, you know, we go through this water balance, we have studies from 2007, 2014 and 2021 that compare what's coming out of the aquifer as opposed to what's going into the aquifer through natural recharge. So, in 2013, we had a deficit of approximately 5,600 acre feet. And in 2020, we had a deficit of 33,000 acre feet. And that is generally attributed to the substantial growth in irrigation, agricultural irrigation. Again, looking back at some of the old water studies back in 2007, agricultural use wasn't even classified as a use in the analysis provided by USG. agricultural use wasn't even classified as a use in the analysis provided by USGS. In 2014, it represented about 50% of the use along with us. And now, it's just shy of 70% of the use is going towards industrial agriculture. And one of the, one of the main concerns is that there's a vast potential for this to continue to expand. So these current numbers that we're talking about are based upon 8,400 acres that are currently cultivated. There's another 69,000 acres that are owned by agricultural interests but are not currently cultivated. Now, that's the potential for an 800% growth in agricultural use.
Rob, just, I just want to, just stay on this slide for just a second. There, there's currently no rules in place, no regulation of water to stop that 6,900, 69,000 acres from being put into some kind of crop form. And that's, that's really, out of all of this, that's really alarming of how much acreage, and we're talking about high desert land, that has been high desert land for eons. And so I just, I, this, this one just always gets me because we've seen the water use in our basin, Rob just showed you that, that graph, where agriculture didn't even register as an individual category in 2007. Now is over 70% in 2021, 2022, so.
Thanks, sir. So just some more numbers for you. From 2012, these are high-volume wells, which again are the non-exempt wells, those that are capable of over 35 gallons per minute. But some of these wells are up to 33,500 gallons per minute. So from 2012 to 2021, the number of those wells permitted within the, within our basin almost doubled from 97 to 182. Of those 182, 19 of those since 2012 are bigger than any well that we currently have in our municipal water system.
Rob, what is that number? Our largest well? What's our?
Yeah, our largest well is right around 3,000 gallons per minute.
Okay, thanks.
Any one of those wells, those 19 wells, has the capacity to produce enough water for 16,000 homes. And that's based upon our residential gallons per capita per day calculation. And so, again, our big concern, you know, as a municipal water provider, is that the model shows that some of our wells would be some of the first impacted by water decline. In, in just, in general, water decline's not across the board. It's not a number that shows up across the whole basin. There are, there are a lot, you know, and I'm no hydrogeologist, but there are a lot of other factors that, that are involved in that. But these num, these two or three wells are in the Kingman Sub Basin, which is the basin where we draw the majority of our water. And they have shown a decrease from 48 to 48 feet, or from 40 to 48 feet since 1990. And, I think I might be jumping ahead a little bit. And so, the, the impact of that is that, you know, if our wells are some of the first to be impacted, and if we end up having to drill new wells to replace those, we're looking at approximately $3 million per well. We have 11 wells in the Wallopai Sub Basin right now. We've got another one that's getting ready to come online. You know, that's a big expense for our ratepayers to pay, and essentially be the only ones contributing to a solution that they had no part in creating.
Can I just stop you right there? I, I just want to underscore that because I don't think people understand that what this means is as the water level goes down, the city residents will be hit with the bill to drill deeper wells, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
They're about, right in today's dollars, $36 million will need to come out of the water fund to pay for those wells.
Yes, ma'am.
And if we divided that by the number of users, this is a huge increase.
Yes, ma'am.
So, so we pay the price if the INA isn't put in place and we don't protect our water.
Yes.
So I think, unfortunately, sometimes you have to put it in dollars for people to care. Why should I care? Well, if we don't do something, you might not be able to afford your water bill anymore. And then what? And we run out. And then our homes aren't worth anything. Sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine. Thank you. Yeah, the only caveat is, I mean, we can't predict when or how many we would have to replace at any one time, you know. So, in general, Arizona water laws favor large-scale agriculture over the needs of homeowners in pretty much all other businesses. Again, as Mr. Foggan talked about, you know, outside of the urban areas, rural Arizona is kind of on its own when it comes to groundwater. There's nothing to prohibit anyone from drilling as many wells as they want, as large as they want, or as deep as they want. They can pump unlimited quantities of water and are not even required to report how much water they are pumping. They're not subject to any local land use controls, you know, either at the county or at the city level. And this is just some of the historical, you know, these are some of the previous legislative efforts that we've worked on for the last few years. Back in 2017, we implemented the IGA with Mojave County to contract with USGS for the groundwater model for the Wallopai Basin. And you can see at the state level, you know, the Mojave County West Basin Water User Study Committee was established. Preliminary findings of the USGS report were presented to a joint meeting of the council and Board of Supervisors on October 19th, 2020. Again, at the state level, the Rural Groundwater Working Group was established. And for three consecutive years, Representative Cobb introduced a bill to authorize rural management areas. And none of those bills ever made it out of committee. Back in 20, earlier in 2022, we had met with Speaker Bowers to discuss some of these issues. The updated findings of the USGS groundwater model were presented to the Board of Supervisors in June, and excuse me, and to the council in July, and then the state budget was passed at the end of June. So throughout the development of the USGS groundwater model, efforts were made to, to receive input from agricultural users on water usage and future water usage projections. Most of those efforts were informal in nature. But on October 6th, Representative of 2021, Representative Cobb's office sent out a letter requesting this information. And that request was in her role as chairman of the Mojave County West Basin Water User Study Committee. Also, in October of '21, a meeting of the local farm bureau was held, and Mojave County staff attended and requested the same water usage information from members of that group present. Again, none of that information was ever provided to us. What we've, what was used for the model inputs for agricultural usage is something that, you know, the, the Department of Water Resources has, has used extensively in the past. And that's based upon aerial surveys of how many acres are cultivated, what type of crop it is, relative age of that crop, and then typical water user, usage for a crop of that age, you know, multiplied by the number of acres. And then this is a copy of Representative Cobb's letter, along with all the addresses. And again, just the letters requesting, you know, that, that information. And I know that, you know, as, as the local municipal provider, we went through and gave them our historic pumping information and worked up projections based upon our water master plan on growth of the system over time. So just the other reminder at the end is that the meetings at the Mojave County Admin Building, Saturday, November 12th, a public hearing on the irrigation non-expansion area. And with that, I can try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Rob, and we appreciate that report. And I, thanks, thanks again for the reminder about all of us attending that meeting on November 12th. We actually had a previous meeting today. I announce that again. That is so important that we support that, that meeting and show up in force. Counsel, any comments or questions for Mr. Owen? Yes, Counselor.
So, Rob, right now, there's no restrictions in place to these farmers? They can just use as much water as they want?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. It's currently outside of the active management areas. There's no restriction on agricultural use.
Actually, there, the DWR director has put something in place while this decision's being made.
Yeah, oh yeah, and I should have stated that. With the, when the director announced the, the, announced the public hea, the official public hearing on the irrigation non-expansion area, that effectively put a stay in place. So the department is not issuing any new well permits at this time for non-exempt wells over 35 gallons per minute. So that, that stay took place when he announced the public hearing.
Okay, so those grandfathered in, there, there's gonna be a cap for them. They're not gonna be able to continue, they're just gonna have to use the same amount that they're currently using, right?
Well, they'll have to, they'll have to report their usage. They won't be able to expand their operation onto additional acreage unless they can go through this process and demonstrate to the Department of Water Resources that they've, you know, they've made some significant investment towards that purpose. And I'm, I'm not sure how exactly that process will work, but that'd be something that the director of the DWR will determine.
Okay, thank you, Rob. And, yeah, I hope our community, you know, comes to this meeting. It's, it's vital to this community. And I did want to just mention, it's at noon?
Our 1:00.
1:00. And then also, the, the community could come to our veterans parade, and that starts at 10:00 that day, and then they could shoot over to the INA meeting at the BOS Room 700 West Beale Street. Thank you. Thank you, Rob.
Any other questions for Mr. Owen? Yes, Counselor.
I do have a question. So, I have kind of a concern about the INA and the director's authority. So if we go into an INA, then what is the director's authority to flip it to an AMA if they see fit later on down the road?
It would have to go, it would, it would basically be starting that process over, the process that we started.
So the public hearings would have to happen, but ultimately, the director makes that decision. Is that not correct?
You could, or the other potential is that, you know, the residents of the basin could petition the department to create that. It can be created either by a petition, which would land with a, you know, a vote of the people to institute an AMA, or the director could declare an AMA after going through a similar process that we're going through on the INA.
Okay.
So, just to be clear on that question, because it has been rumored that that is what is being said, is that this is ADWR's foot into the door to do what they want to do. The answer to that is that if, when this community can no longer show 100, 100-year water supply, that ADWR can step in and put an AMA into place at that time. So, it's not really a foot in the door. There is, there are thresholds that ADWR uses in which to implement AMAs when they, when they do without the act of petition from citizens.
So my next question is, what if said farmers, if the INA goes into effect, and said farmers want to sell their land? The water rights go with the land, correct? So if they sold it to a municipality, if they sold it to another individual, they would have those water rights? Is that, is that a true statement?
Well, I mean, again, the Department of Water Resources would be administering that program. So that's who they would be reporting to, and if, I would assume that there's a change of use or of occupancy or ownership, that that would be a process that they would have to notify the Department of Water Resources on.
So if they were to sell, they would have to notify the Department of Water Resources?
I believe so.
Okay. But the sale wouldn't have to be approved necessarily by the Department of Water Resources. It could be sold.
I, I can't speak to that. That's, that's, that's within their jurisdiction.
Yeah, big brother. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Staley.
I just want to encourage everybody to take the drive out Stockton Hill. I just recently was headed to Meadview, and I took Stockton Hill, and I was shocked because what I saw was not what some of the farmers had described at the meeting, where there was a lot of, you know, the big irrigation, overhead irrigation that, you know, you've got problems with, the water not being used effectively, whether, you know, the wind's blowing or it just doesn't make it to the ground. I also saw a lot of acres of what appeared to be dead trees, whether it was abandoned or they just died. And that led me to start asking questions, and some of these trees take years to maturity, and, and they can die anywhere along the way, and it, and it happens, where they'll, the whole thing will, you know, all the trees will get sick and die. So then you've watered them all those years for nothing because they're, they didn't make it. So when you go out there and you see acres of dead trees, it's a little unsettling when you see these other types of irrigation processes. So I'm encouraging everybody, go see it for yourself before the meeting so you can go in and have a really good idea of, of what's happening out there. I know there are some that are working really hard to use the best technology possible, but it's clear not everybody is, is in that program. So please go look and see for yourself.
Thank you. Rob, good question. The picture where you show the geographical section on that, just so people understand, that actually is from mountain top on the east to the mountain top on the ridge, the ridges of that, right? That's including that whole basin? Isn't that what that line is as to defining it? Does that fall into that INA?
Yes, sir. So, yeah, this, this diagram actually shows the three sub-basins.
Yes.
Within the Wallopai Basin, and that's, you know, we're in the Kingman Sub Basin. The deepest part is in the Wallopai Sub Basin, and up north, there's the Southern Greg Sub Basin. But the Department of Water Resources, as far as their AMA and their INA programs go, do not recognize sub-basins. The INA would apply to this entire basin.
The entire region. Okay. Actually, it was brought out because I know this was happened at the last, at the, the first pre-hearing, I guess we can call it, or the hearing that was about it. You know, there were some farmers saying that there, I mean, some people that are owners of wells, that their wells actually have risen a couple inches or 10 inches in the last number of years. That was actually brought at a previous meeting today that I was at. A gentleman said, on his side of Stockton Hill Road, his water has actually gone up like five or six inches. But his neighbors across the street, maybe a quarter of a mile away, their wells have dropped. So there are peaks and valleys in this water system, and people have to understand that, that, you know, especially as you climb up hillsides, it's typical, your water is not as deep as you, it's interesting how water, we don't, you can't, who knows? We have models, but even that doesn't mean it's always the case. And so, what's important is the monitoring wells that we do have in place for the main basins of this, that it is dropping, and that's what people need to realize.
Yes, sir. And I guess just, we had talked about this quite a while ago, but, you know, the. but, you know, the, one of the things that's really troublesome with the model is that, you know, it shows, and I think, it shows this shelf kind of between the Kingman Sub Basin and the majority of the Walupi Basin. And that's located somewhere out around Long Mountain. And as this drawdown continues in the Kingman Sub Basin, you know, so right now, there's this shelf, water is still flowing back and forth depending on, you know, pumping and other things. Water's flowing back and forth between those two basins. In the future, the model shows that, that, that shelf rises and actually separates the Kingman Sub Basin from the Walupi Basin. And so, at that point, you know, and there's, there's, the model shows a lot more water in the Walupi Sub Basin. At that point, there's no flow between anymore. And basically, what we would have in the Kingman Sub Basin would be, you know, what we recharge, both naturally and through our recharge efforts, minus what we draw. So, there's, there's no other flow. So, essentially, at that point, we're cut off.
Right. And as you mentioned earlier, and as Counselor Saly mentioned, that means, 'cause most of our wells are located in the Kingman Sub Basin area.
Yes.
Which means, our wells, we would have to drill deeper to be able to try to recover more water. And it's gonna add a significant cost. So, okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Owen, thanks again for that report. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Item 7D, street development standards. Mr. Foggan?
Thank you. We discussed this a while ago, and Jack has been compiling some information, looking at some best practices, and wanted to just come back and show you the progress, kind of where we are, what changes may be considered by the council, and maybe some of the realities that we face as far as how this community's developed with streets. And that, we often refer to it as the half-street issue, or 12 plus 8, as we've come to know it. And so, I've asked Jack if he would walk you through what he's, what he's finding.
And Jack will do that as soon as he's not having some technical difficulties locating his slides. So, if you could stand by with me for just a moment. All right, looks like we're getting somewhere now. All right. Thank you for your patience. Good to see y'all again this evening, Mayor, members of council. So, as Mr. Foggan indicated, we're gonna talk about Kingman roadway development regulations, specifically a couple holes in the bucket we're trying to plug at the moment. And I just wanna preface this whole conversation with, Phil actually has some funding to do an overhaul of the entire street and sidewalk regs system. So, the ghost in the IT room has it. All right. So, let's talk a little bit about roadway build-out. So, this is a table out of the street and sidewalk regs, and this defines each of the roadway types as far as their functional class, arterial collector or residential, local, and what their, their widths are. So, this defines the right-of-way width, the width between the curbs, how much asphalt, all those. So, tonight, we're gonna talk specifically about residential roads. And so, I wanna have you go to the very bottom of that table, and we're gonna talk about half-street improvements. If you look all the way over to local, again, that's what we're gonna talk about tonight, it tells you you're gonna build out the half-street plus 8 feet. So, I'll show you what that looks like in a bit. So, let's talk about what that table means. So, this is that table visually represented. So, you can actually see the width from center line to the face of the curb, the width of the sidewalk, the overall width of the right-of-way. So, if you were to take that center line mark and go to either the left or right where it says right-of-way, that's gonna be half a road. So, if we were gonna build a half plus 8 road, we would take that half of the road, 8, add 8 feet of asphalt opposite of whatever curb was built, and go on from there. So, the requirement now is that the developers required to develop the side of the road that they are on. What we ran into, there was some ambiguity in the, the language of the ordinance, and I'll bring that to you in a few, with some, some proposed changes, that if they built the first half of the road, it's not full improvements, but the way the ordinance was worded, that allows them to build half the road and potentially somebody come back and build on the undeveloped half in the future. So, what does that look like? This is an example of that right here. So, on the top of the screen, you can see the single multifamily unit right there, and you can see there's curb, gutter, sidewalk, half, half plus 8 asphalt. And then on the south side, there were some houses that were built. And because now it is an improved roadway, but not to full standard, not to that detail that you showed where it had curb to curb, these houses were able to be built. So, that's the hole we're trying to plug up right now. And again, I still wanna highlight, there's other things that we wanna address in the street and sidewalk regs, but we're trying to fix one, one item at the moment. So, this was in your packet. I won't go into it in great detail. But essentially, what we're trying to do is say, you're going to build the full improvement. Now, what does that full improvement mean? That doesn't mean a developer builds the entire roadway when they're building on one side or they own the property on one side. They would still develop their one side, and then the property on the other side would be required to do that at which time they developed. That also includes corner lots, double frontage lots. You guys have heard some conversation on double frontage, so you can have a frontage in the front and in the rear. So, we do have some lots that are here. You see that a lot downtown. Sometimes if they're, they're situated between a collector and a local, say, Walupi Shadows is an example of that, maybe somebody that fronts central on the backside of the house, but, you know, the front of their, their driveway is onto a residential road. So, that, that looks at those situations also 'cause we do have corner lots and things that that comes into, into effect. This is a lot in there, but that really sums up a lot of that. And then also talks about the, the, the process in which we accept these improvements and issuing a, a formal acceptance, whether that comes from council or a letter, and that's to accept those maintenance, or those assets into our maintenance system. That'll be important for some of the other things that we're looking at. We'll actually need that to, to trigger some dates and some requirements that would come up actually, that could be for potential like paybacks that we have to water wastewater, you know, sewer lines. And so, apparently, I left off my question slide. Really, those are the holes we're trying to plug, and I wanted to ask if you guys had any questions or wanted to provide any feedback.
Jack, when you were talking about all this, of course, I was thinking, how much of this stuff is gonna be grandfathered in where this has happened already?
So, we, we have some. The one that I showed you is one section.
The one you just showed us, right.
Yeah, we have a couple of those. So, how we address those going back, those could be potential for improvement districts and things to keep the equity of those that have paid for their improvements through purchasing their home versus those that, you know, the city even through HERF can't necessarily go build roads to, to upgrade their standard.
Okay. Yeah, and that's, I know a lot of people have asked, I'm sure all of us as council members, well, how come the city can't do anything with my dirt road? You know, especially with this, this, this property tax that we're asking for the increase on Proposition 415. They're asking, well, it's not gonna address, I mean, sales tax, not property tax, thank you. Sales tax, I better say it right, huh? I'll get in trouble. But sales tax increase. We all have been asked, well, this doesn't, this doesn't do anything for my dirt road that I live in. And of course, I, we all have to explain to them, well, when you bought that property, you knew it was a dirt road, and you probably got that property a little bit cheaper. If it would've been a paved road, you probably would've paid more. But we do need to let, make sure the citizens understand that they can form an improvement district to help get that road paved.
That is correct. So, and, and that's absolutely correct. We have about 18 and a half miles of dirt road that we maintain within the city limits. You know, some portion of that is half-streets. We have some where a block is paved and half a block isn't. There, there's some cut-up pieces. And so, trying to identify those areas and promote improvement districts is gonna be a big-ticket item for all of those areas. You know, and that'll, that'll also play in the future when we're looking at curb, gutter, sidewalk because we have a lot of areas that, that are developed with just asphalt, but don't have curb or sidewalk as well. So, and those are actually being inventoried currently.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Plante? Yes, Counselor.
Well, I think this is for Manager Foggan. So, Manager Foggan, if the citizens wanted to create an improvement district, is that 50% of the property owners involved plus one vote? Yeah, and they initiate that, that themselves?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Just so the citizens know.
And we provide, when, when that happens, I think you remember, we've had that come up where we had a neighborhood that had shown up and said, we want, we wanna do curb, gutter, and sidewalk. And the conversation was, okay, engineering will work up a price per lot. And then they need, the homeowner or homeowners that wish to participate, take that back, talk to their neighborhood. And then there's a process for them to basically say, we wanna be in it or we don't wanna be in it. And you're right, is 51% of the, of the property owners say that they wanna be part of that special improvement district. We move forward.
Created. Okay, thank you.
And we, we do have periodically, people come in and request information on the improvement district and the process and things. And so far, it seems to be the difficulty for them is obtaining that 50 plus one vote within that, that limit of that improvement district. And to, to Mayor Watkins' point, you're right, the, the people that bought on a paved street have paid for that, that paved street and those improvements through their, the cost of their home and making sure that's fair and equitable across the board. This doesn't, this doesn't address those grandfathered-in or existing conditions. That'll be something we'll be addressing through other means as well.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Counselor Saly.
So, on, on these streets where you have, like, we just had this in P&amp;Z recently, where there were just a few houses, it's a dirt street, they're gonna add a couple more. And it's like, well, we can't do a half-street just in front of three houses. You know, because that wouldn't make sense. But i- is there any way that at a certain point, when that street has so many houses, there's a forced improvement district? Because really, all those houses got out of doing those improvements that they needed to do that we would require if somebody was building, you know, every house on that street on both sides, right? They'd be required to pave. So, when you move, when you bought that house, you got out of that. And if, if there were a way that it finally triggers, like, half of the street is developed, now everybody has to pitch in and, and pave the street. Could we do that? Is that Cooper?
I'll probably leave that to Carl. We've, we've had some discussions on that in the past.
I, I think there's, there's problems when you're looking at there, that the people are developing those individual properties or those individual people developing that property, and these other properties aren't owned by them. And I think generally what happens is if we're not requiring them to put in the improvements, they may be putting in a, an assurance or the cost that the city will deal with it at a later time when you've got it more built out.
Could, could they sign something saying, we're gonna let you delay these improvements until the streets develop to a certain percent, and then you must do them? I mean, because what, what happens is, they add one house at a time, and then pretty soon, both sides are filled, and there's a dirt street. And now, if, if people, a lot of people don't know how to do the improvement district. I wish we had some kind of educational piece that we could put out on that. But they don't know how, and then you might have neighbors that just aren't gonna pay for it. And so, now that dirt street is never gonna get paved.
Yeah, so, little, little background on how we got to this point even. So, 2015, 2016, there was nothing in place to stop the individual development of those unimproved roadways. So, you look around Kingman, you may not see them. Some of you guys are more familiar than others, maybe, but there is lots and lots of platted right-of-way. That, that platted right-of-way goes back into, you know, the 1920s even. And so, the right-of-way exists, and, and at that time, there was nothing to prevent somebody from going and building five miles from any improved roadway. And then who has the responsibility to improve, provide emergency access, city services, those sorts of things? So, that's actually what, what generated ordinance 1813 or, or some changes within the street and sidewalk regs. And that required that if you have a roadway that is not improved, with the exception of those that are already on the city-maintained roadway network. So, we have some dirt roads that were accepted by resolution by council at that time, and they're attached to the ordinance 1813, that you have to improve to the nearest improved roadway. And that would be to that half plus 8. Or if you're doing a whole roadway, you own both sides, you're gonna, or developing both sides, you'd have to improve the full road width. So, the, the acceptance of additional dirt roads is being prevented currently. But going backwards, one of the things we looked at was, you know, maintenance history, were they being maintained? The level of development? And with the exception of probably one, maybe two roads in the network where they are a distance away from a paved road, and there's few houses on that. Most of those were developed, over 75% of the lots were developed, buildable. And so, as far as accepting new dirt roads, that's not occurring. But how we manage, you know, accepting of assets and, and getting other roads paved, this doesn't change that. It, it just prevents us from ending up with half-dirt streets again.
Okay. Thank you for the comments, all of us. Seeing no other questions for Mr. Plante? Thank you, Jack. Appreciate it.
Great. We will, we will be cleaning some items up and bringing it back to you for consideration and approval.
That'll be great. Thank you. Item number eight, announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager. Mr. Foggan?
We've talked about, I think, the two that I had. So, there is, of course, the Veterans Parade, 10 o'clock. It is in our historic downtown. That is for the veterans in honor of the veterans. We are planning on having the ride for the council. And so, you need to plan on being down at the parade start route at a, no, probably no later than 9:45 for the parade start at 10 o'clock. And then, of course, the INA meeting at the Board of Supervisors Auditorium, which will be the same day. That is November 12th. And that runs from, planned to run from 1 to 5 PM.
Okay.
Strange as that is.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Walker?
Just one thing. I attended a groundbreaking ceremony a week and a half ago for Next Gen Cairo slash Closer. They're gonna be building out by the Griffith Power Plant. They're in permitting now for, they're trying to get permits, but they, they had a ceremony. They're gonna be up to about 100 jobs in the next couple of years out there. Looks like a nice facility, so, that's all I have. And, oh, and I attended the Walk Away From Drugs And, oh, and I attended the Walk Away From Drugs with the, the mayor and Manager Foggan, and a lot of staff members, it was really good.
Great. Well, thanks for attending, and thanks for attending that groundbreaking representing council.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Okay, Counselor Saly. Okay, Counselor Savage? Okay, Counselor Saly.
Um, just briefly, I attended the She Strong Triathlon event to give them the proclamation, and it was very inspiring. They swam in the Colorado River, they got on their bikes, they rode up the hill, down, they got off in Golden Valley, they ran, I think, Shinnuump and Old Route sixty-six up. Um, it was amazing and, and very, uh, inspiring, so I, I was glad to attend that.
Well, once again, thanks for representing council on that. Appreciate it. Counselor Melo.
Nothing this evening.
Great, thank you very much. A couple things I just wanna bring up and remind everybody. Uh, this Friday, of course, is First Friday, actually, even prior to that, let me back up, at ten AM in the morning on Friday, is the Healthy Eating Children's Event at the Dig It Community Gardens over by Cecil Davis Park. And, uh, the community gardens are a great thing to go to and visit, there's master gardeners, there's a number of people that, if you need help gardening, that's where you're gonna run into them, at, is over there. And of course, this event is, once again, aimed towards our children, and that's at ten AM on Friday. Also then, at five thirty, is First Friday Downtown here, and it looks like the theme, I think, is going to be Day of the Dead, because it's proximity to Halloween still, which, which was yesterday. And, um, of course, there's always a number of different events happening downtown here, and First Friday is always a great way to support our community down in here downtown Kingman. The parade was mentioned, there is the Kingman Cancer Care Arts and Crafts Fair, and that will be, uh, Saturday the twelfth and Sunday the thirteenth at the Mojave County Fairgrounds, and that is Saturday from nine to five, of course, and Sunday, nine to three. And then, of course, uh, the ADWR meeting, the Veterans Parade happening that day too on the twelfth. So, uh, once again, we have lots of great activities going on, the weather is perfect right now, uh, this is the great time of year. Nope, yes. Oh, yes. Thank you, Counselor Savage. Do you wanna announce that?
Well, I was there in a different capacity.
Well, yes, you were, okay. We did have, uh, last Friday, um, Mr. Savage was there, Mr. Foggan was there, and I think that was it. Oh, yeah. Anyway, at the Safeway reopening, the old Safeway, well, it's not the old Safeway, but it's the Safeway right off of Detroit and Stockton Hill Road, and that was great to have that, uh, store reopen. And so, um, anyway, it was represented well, Lee Williams High School band was there, and there were great events happening. So, anyway, once again, our town is growing, lots of good, positive things happening, and we appreciate all of us that participate in our community. And I can't say enough, thanks, thanks for all of us for setting, striving to set forth a good example. Council number nine, item request, council requests for future reports and updates. Do we have any tonight? Okay. Well, then, hearing no complaints, then I would say this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.